All right, all the board is ready to meet of the Lenox Township Board of Trustees Monday, May thirteenth, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval meeting agenda. So we've got a few things that need to be changed now. Under public safety report, this should be committee service award presentation. Also looking to remove item H and switch the positions of D and E. Now make that a motion.
What was that, Mr. Supervisor? Excuse me, Cap. What do we switch them positions?
D and E.
B and E?
D as in dog.
Okay, any, okay. Thank you.
The other one, H?
You can't have any changes. All right. I have a motion by the Chair, second by the Treasurer. Deputy Court, please call roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnell? Lawson?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, approval meeting, uh, approval minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of four, one twenty-four, five, one twenty-four as presented.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, second by treasurer trustee Gurley. All in favor? Aye. Post here, none, the motion passes. Public announcements? Seeing none, public comment? All right, there is a three minute. Yeah, all right, that there is a.
When's the time start?
Time will start when?
Robert Rivers, six zero four five zero, New Haven Road. My complaint is I had a problem with my neighbor to the east. Six zero four one zero, New Haven Road. The township is, the, uh, building department is known about it. Two thousand twenty-two, July, he built a pole barn. It was forty-eight by ninety-six. I told him that he needed a efficient swale, how far the pole barn was gonna be. He put it forty feet away from the property line. Last year, he put a road around his barn and he's got, he has, uh, downspouts within fifteen feet. The last two weeks, I've been coming, for the last month and a half, I've been coming every two weeks religiously, being like the squeaky wheel to the township. Dennis has been great, everything's been fine. Last Monday, Cindy goes, I go, what's gonna go on with this thing? She says, well, you can't, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink it. That tells me no. So I, I, I know where I am. So what I'm doing is I, I called the drain commission and I also got the state involved. And Dennis said the building department doesn't know about that yet, but the, you can't, on the existing grade, I was, my house was built in sixty-six. I was around farmland, sixty acres. And now all these houses are built up. The last house next door to me, my neighbor, next thing you know, he's, he's four feet, his elevation's four feet higher. You guys, some of you probably know who I am and know where I live. And I don't think it's right. I think the township should have gave the, you wanna give him a, a, um, a certificate of occupancy for his property, if you wanna do, but they should have made him do a swale before. These trailer parks, they lands, they, they do a land bail saying, before a house even gets on a trailer park, you know, and this guy just builds a barn and the township, so I'm kinda like, straight, what do I do, you know? So I'm trying to get the state involved, whatever I have to do, you know? And if it comes down to that, I'll get an attorney, you know, it's, that's my last, best thing. It's just, I think, you know, I think that the township should do for the next thing is if you have a situation like this, they should say, okay, we're not giving you approval of your barn unless you get the, the swale put in.
Especially in my.
Oh, God, you guys, you guys gotta pay for batteries. But anyways, but I'm agreeing with me, it makes sense to me that why, why are you giving a, a certificate of occupancy on a building where there's, where it's not, the swale's not even there? My chickens are, they should, they oughta be ducks right now. They're swimming in puddles, you know, so. But that's it. I mean, I just think you guys, I'm here to put it on the minutes. Uh, I've got a track record going, so whatever, whatever you guys can do, I just wanna have just here tonight to tell you that that's my feelings. I think if the next thing the township should say, okay, before we get a certificate, before we say, okay, you can, your building is a final approval, then you should say, okay, first of all, you gotta put a swale in and do what you have to do to be great. This guy has a finished grade. His finished grade, like I was in the landscape business for thirty-seven years, his finished grade, I wouldn't be home by noon every day if that was considered a finished grade. But that's you guys. Thank you.
Public comment? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All items, oh. Oh, you just left your papers, okay.
Can I draw four?
All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by township board, will be met by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these meetings unless a member on the board or councilor plus staff are part of the meeting. In which event, the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under agenda item number eight. Well, approved consent agenda shall be by majority, vote, all votes present.
Um, for orders and bills, there is, um, seven hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents to be approved at this time.
I'm making motion to accept the consent agenda, but the orders and bills are seven hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second. I have a motion by treasurer Hummels, supported by trustee Clifford, and deputy court, please call roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item eight, item rose consent agenda, public safety report, committee service award presentation. Chief White?
Thank you, members of the board and members of the community that are here tonight. It given me great pleasure tonight to, um, be able to provide some recognition to some of our firefighters and EMS personnel for services that they have rendered here in the community that are kind of above and beyond what they do, when they sign on for these jobs. You know, television, the news media, social media emulates us as, as heroes and, and lifesavers and what have you. And frankly, that's just a little part of what we do. Earlier this year, it had come to the attention of the township supervisor that he kept seeing the four same faces at many of our community events here in the community, whether it's the Easter egg hunt, the tree lighting, the big truck event. And he asked that there was a way we could bring them forward and recognize them for those, for, for those activities that they do over and above their daily, daily, their day-to-day responsibilities. Uh, I thought that was a great idea and agreed, like I say, when they come to work for us, it's not particularly what they signed up for, but they certainly do emulate not only the heroics I mentioned initially, but they emulate being just good community citizens and ambassadors. So with that, I'm gonna ask if they will come up. Firefighter Sue Baggins, firefighter Dustin Kruger, Sergeant Brian Kloski, and EMT Jan Hartway. So each, uh, each member will be given an award that kind of looks like this for the purpose of the public to be able to worn, uh, to be able to wear on their uniforms as well as a smaller, what we call ribbon, that can be worn just on their uniform shirt. Board citizens, thank you all for allowing us to recognize our local firefighters and EMS personnel here this evening. And on behalf of all of us in Lenox Township, thank you to the four of you. We're gonna count on your continued support. We have some more summer events coming, so thank you very much.
All right, item nine, A, unfinished business, day-to-day operations organizational charge. Mr. Grayba?
Good evening, board members, members of the audience. This evening, this comes back in front of the board for review from unfinished business. In your packets this evening, you have a proposal for day-to-day operations organizational charge. As you see, all of it is attached, clearly laid out. At this point in time, if there's any questions, feel free to bring them forward. Otherwise than that, we'll bring it back from the supervisor's office to the board for recognition. And a vote.
Mr. Grayba, was that, um, the administrative assistant to the township supervisor and yourself, that is currently filled?
That is not filled. That is not designed to be filled.
It was a position left by Ms. Grayne Bridges when she sent.
Which I didn't know if we had put ahead and filled.
It's remained vacant. The board has not.
It continues to remain vacant and at this point in time, it's not designed to be filled.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the day-to-day operations organizational charge as proposed by supervisor Reader.
I'll second.
I have a motion by court Lawson, supported by treasurer Hummels, and deputy court, please call roll.
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, item ten, new business, item A, Richmond Christian Church, parcel number nineteen dash oh six dash one three dash one oh two dash oh oh two waiver request. This one passes? This one falls under your recall. Do you have that, please?
I have not seen, Mr. Supervisor, I have not seen the letter there. I was sorry to upset you at the offices. I do know that they, the church congregation had come to me and wanted to know about using a temporary parking lot or creating a temporary parking lot. I have no objections, but I said that it's part of the engineering design standards. They only need approval from the township board. Again, I do have no, I have no objections. I would suggest though that you allow it for maybe a year at a time and allow them to come back and state their progress in creating a permanent parking lot.
I believe we have some other petitioners here with us.
Correct.
I'm Joe Lauf, the real estate agent that helped them acquire, um, the two vacant parcels south of Richmond Christian Church, just up the road. By the grace of God, they were able to acquire those. The church had been kind of stagnant. I hate to use that word, but it wasn't in a growth period. Pastor Jim took over recently, um, a couple of years ago, uh, almost five years. And the church is in a rebuilding phase, um, doing many things for the community, and I will let Pastor Jim speak to those things. So the parcel just south of the church has ample room to extend the gravel driveway. Like Stephen said, the church cannot afford to asphalt existing, expand, but desperately needs some additional parking. Um, I'll let Pastor Jim speak to the things that are going on, but a recent funeral really spiked the parking need and problem. So if we can get a waiver to at least embark on a similar parking arrangement that currently exists, and then hopefully over the next couple of few years, grow and be able to sit down and formally talk about a more robust parking lot. Pastor, you want to add? So yeah, we are in a growth phase. Okay, when I got there, there was approximately fifteen people at the church. We now have forty-five on rosters. And, uh, so we are in a growth phase. And, uh, like Joe said, that, uh, we were coming into some parking issues. Uh, we had approximately a hundred and ten people at a funeral. Didn't expect that many, but that's what happened. And they were parking and they're downgrading, which is not good, that's not safe, you know? So I, I said, we gotta do something about this. We got the property and all that, you know, so that's been happening. But we've been reaching the community, which is why we're in such a good growth phase right now. We're growing. And, uh, we've been out, you know, for Halloween at the fire station, and we've done Richmond Good Old Days, and we're out there reaching the community. So we wanna be able to do that. We wanna be able to grow as a church, reach the community of Richmond and Lenox Township. And so in order to do that, we just need to be able to get our parking going in the right direction and be able to do it in the right way. That's, that's my concern. Oh yeah, we had a lot of families. Now we started a food pantry, and on Saturdays, we've got a full parking lot. We'd be coming for the food pantry. So we're, we're doing a lot to help out the community. We wanna be able to continue to do that.
Mr. Safety, have you seen the situation?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, board members. We were not aware of this request until a minute ago. But in general speaking, the township board has designed a law on gravel parking lot unless they come in for a special waiver that still has that, the gravel parking lot has to sustain the, the fire trucks' access and circulation and also support the weight and also drainage and grading requirements. So without a plan, a proper plan, uh, we can, we cannot recommend this approval to the board as is.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the waiver request for Richmond Christian Church, parcel numbers nineteen dash oh six dash one three dash one oh two, oh, dash one, sorry, dash zero zero three and zero zero four to expand parking utilizing gravel until such time in the future they can pave the lot with asphalt. I have a motion by the chair, second by treasurer Hummels, and deputy court, please call roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. All right, item B, twenty twenty-four dust control application program, Mr. Grayba?
Good evening, members of the board and the, uh, audience this evening. With the twenty twenty-four summer season fast approaching us, the Com County Department of Roads has been delayed in working their, uh, numbers. And you're gonna hear why here real, real quick. For dust control programs, as usual, Com County will supply the first two applications free of charge to the township and the additional applications to the township at the tune of forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars per application. The supervisor's office is recommending up to a total of four applications this year. Keep in mind, two of these being free from the county, one for June, one for July, one for August, and one's for September. This is the bribe program that we've used in the past. I will clarify to the board and members of the audience that this price is astronomically doubled for the entire applications that we have done last year. This will cost us a total of ninety-four thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars if we actually apply both applications on our side compared to the two applications that the county is actually going to be providing. So basically, the county will do June and July, we're then responsible for August and September if needed. We actually have that capacity to pull that back. Just keep in mind that, you know, all the values and services have just went up tremendously. But if nothing else, this is a pure shock factor of truth, of cost and, uh, items. With that, I'll bring it back to the board and open any questions.
How many applications did we use last year, Mark?
Three. And that, Mr. Clifford, that was two from the county and one from Austin. And last year's applications costs were twenty-two thousand total?
Twenty-two thousand total for that third application.
Correct. Now, keep in mind, if we continue with the weather the way it is, it rains and all of a sudden it turns hot and dry. And I wanna say, three weeks ago, we actually had numerous calls of dust complaints instantly. And that was back in April. But there's not much more we can do to control the roads and the dust.
I don't give you do it, when's the first application due to go down?
June is the, the county sets the time and the date, but the month, each month right now, it's scheduled. Last year, we did the very end of August and negated the effect of using September's cost.
If there is no more discussion, I believe the motion will be in order.
I want to make a motion to approve the Com County twenty twenty-four dust control application. Uh, utilizing the first two applications free of charge to the township, with two additional applications at the tune of forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars per application if needed.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Hummels, supported by court Lawson, and deputy court, please call roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item C, twenty twenty-four limestone application regulations. Mr. Grayba?
Good evening, board. Uh, this is the time of year of maintenance. Uh, this evening in front of you, you have the twenty twenty-four limestone application request. Um, this has come through to us from our DPW superintendent. Recently, uh, Mr. Trobley and, uh, Mr. Stett, our township engineer, have reviewed, uh, miles of roads and areas needing the first are listed in front of you. Place Road thirty-two mile, thirty mile, twenty-nine mile, thirty mile to Haven Ridge to Bates, twenty-nine mile Haven Ridge to Bates, Bates, New Haven Road, twenty-seven mile, Bates Road, twenty-six to twenty-seven mile. Keep in mind, uh, these gentlemen keep a list and a copy of what we've done each year consistently. We're able to track exactly what they've done. These road improvements have continued to work throughout the township. This year, we're asking for the continuation of that application.
And I'm sure it's a bit of a, it's pretty. Hey, bear with me one second. Do you agree with?
I apologize, I got myself a little confused. So the recommendation to have this limestone application from the county are those three miles that have been put in front of you this evening.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation by, um, DPW, uh, our engineer and supervisor's department place it as, as listed on this.
You've got more than three miles on that list.
Yeah, hold on. Okay, my bad, my bad, you're right.
Personally, I would recommend Bates Road from New Haven Road to twenty-six mile. It's never been done according to the map that we have. Last year, we used pretext of wordman not being done ever to, uh, limestone down the wordman. Bates Road is the only road left that we have that has never received limestone in our current records.
Are there, um, also looking at this now too, maybe, um, Cam or Shemek can answer. Are we like, on any of these, would they be completed if we did what was on there? If we complete that particular section of road?
Uh, good evening. Uh, to answer your question, like the first three roads that are being recommended because of the greatest of need, they've already been done previously.
You're speaking of place thirty and twenty-nine?
Uh, correct. Now, not only did we drive these roads and assess them currently, you know, I had conversations with the foreman over at the road commission as far as what areas did they get the most call, what areas are they having to continually grade on a regular basis because of calls, um, traffic counts, number of houses, you know? That's, that's kinda how we rate the greatest of need. Uh, and that's how this list is, is generated. You are correct. Parts of Bates have not been done yet. We don't get any calls, we don't get any complaints. The road is not as in that shape as the ones listed in front of it.
If there's no further discussion, I believe the motion will be in order.
I make a motion that we cover the, the three of greatest need first. Place thirty-two, one mile, thirty mile Place Road de Homo, and twenty-nine Place Road de Homo.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, second by trustee Gurley, and deputy court, please call roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
All right. Next, the item, parcel pick-up all important proposals. Mr. Grayba? Please switch the number, oh, sorry. Mark?
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Board, this evening Supervisor's Office via the Parks and Recs Committee is bringing forward a request to have the addition of two pickball courts to Lennox Township Park in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, near the newly renovated Senior Community Center. The Supervisor's Office is recommending approval of this project with the township engineer working in conjunction with the Supervisor's Office to create a plan, a draft, and an RFP for the board's consideration for the next meeting for construction. Then I'll open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
If there's no discussion, I will make a motion to approve the addition of two pickball courts in the township park, allowing the township engineer to create a plan and draft a request for proposal in conjunction with Supervisor's Office for the board's consideration at the next regular meeting.
Second.
I am motioned by the chair, seconded by the clerk, and Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gerlee?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
All right, item E, park court maintenance restriking proposal, Mr. Trumley.
Good evening. Originally, this was a request that was made through the clerk's office to obtain some quotes to apply pickball court striking to our existing courts. In the process of doing that, since they're here, our existing courts do need to be freshened up. I did contact five different companies, but I only received a couple of different quotes to do that work. Lowest quote I received was from Goddard Coatings out of Pontiac, their total estimate was thirty-eight hundred dollars. Now, I assume if you could build two courts, you don't want to strike the existing ones?
Partway you do, is that?
He has a question to the board if we want to re-strike the current ones with the addition of two lines, I understand that.
Yeah, the thought was kind of like when we got the request, that in the meantime, while we're building the courts, that we would re-strike the courts that we have now so people can utilize our existing courts while the courts are being built, because currently pickballs are the huge thing with those.
Pickballs are very huge, and that's why we, parks are already recognized, you know, we should have two courts here. My main concern is if we put the striking out there, it would be temporary, correct?
No.
See, now that's.
Can you remove the lines at all if they were now, if they're removed like you're?
It would be very, it would, the coatings that they're going to use to apply these strategies would be the same as like the existing coatings, you know, they're, they're put down to wear and endure the outdoor weather.
Do that.
It would be very labor intensive to remove them, they can be removed, but it would be very labor intensive.
To that end, we would have to, I agree with Cam, we did that for a living early on in my career, we'd, you'd have to literally go out and grind them off, they're not going to come off easily.
Yeah, and that, that's my main concern on this, if we're building these two, why would we have these as permanent?
Yeah, is there a way they can be temporary?
There's no way you can make them temp.
Well, I do agree that we need to maintain the current lines and help refresh them. And with the quote, they can just take the line item off, correct?
Yeah, I would have to go back to them for a, basically a recent metal minus the pickball lines, just doing the existing lines on the existing courts. Obviously, I'm sure that would drop the current cost because they price it out as a lump sum.
Just to throw it in there, I, we've used Goddard at the school where I work, and they're, they're a reputable company, they do a nice job.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the expenditure of up to three thousand eight hundred dollars to have Goddard coatings re-strike the hockey, basketball, and tennis courts, but remove the pickball court, the pickball line from the court.
And what I'll do is I will contact them for a revised quote, so you'll know ahead of time before we do that part.
Second.
I am motioned by the chair, seconded by trustee Gerlee, and Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, that was Reader.
I made the motion, yep.
Gerlee, I'm sorry, let's do Reader first, Reader?
Aye.
Gerlee?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, moving on, item F, business licensing ordinance, Mr. Reader?
Good evening, members of the board, this evening, the Township Supervisor's Office is coming back in front of the board after a ten-year timeframe. This has been brought forward a quarter while ago, and we had considerations and requested the board to adopt business license ordinance. There has been numerous items of this discussion that has come back up recently. What we're really hoping for is to get some foothold and control knowledge of businesses of what items are brought into those operations or stored in those operations. Many of you are well aware and well conscious of the issues that happened in Clinton Township a couple of months ago. This is not saying that we're going to be able to stop that or know about it, but this is an opportunity that is being brought in front of the board for consideration so that we can move forward in a much safer community, a much more knowledge environment. With that, I'll bring it back to the board, any questions, comments? You do have a copy of chapter eight oh six, the business license ordinance in front of
If there's no discussion, I believe the motion will be in order.
Would we, at a later date, do the fee schedule if we wanted to do this?
I believe we have thirty days for this.
But the licensing year doesn't begin until January.
Correct. You have thirty days for this review, then you have thirty days for the fee schedule.
More, there'll be more operating between June and January.
Because with it, the actual intent not taking place until January first, you want to bear with it?
Certainly, so because we use a third party to do our inspections, it's still the most cost-effective way to do it as opposed to thinking you might need a near-full-time employee to, you know, to, to meet the spirit and intent of this ordinance. It's still most cost-effective for us to use a third-party vendor wherever we choose. What the board needs to understand is the fee schedule in third-party vendors gets a little, a little more complicated than just setting it a couple of hundred dollars or whatever the board might choose. For a large building, a, a large facility, it takes far longer to do that inspection, and so using it's based on square footage, the complexity of, of their alarm and suppression system and what have you, I can get all those fees in front of you, but I don't want the board to be particularly taken off guard by what some of those costs might look like for that, for that business license, just to cover, you know, the person doing the inspection. We wouldn't be looking at passing anything on to the township, you know, for that, but, you know, we would have to pass that law to somebody, and in this case, be the, you
If there's no discussion, I believe the motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the businesses, the business licensing ordinance, chapter eight oh six.
I'll second.
I am motioned by the chair, seconded by Treasurer Hollis, and Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Uh, nay, I'm just, I'd like to study it more.
Gerlee?
Aye.
Lawson?
No.
All right, moving on, item G, senior center excursion proposal, Mr. Reader?
Good evening, Board, members of the audience, this evening, the Lennox Township Senior Center is proposing a senior trip. This is in conjunction, parks and recs, and throughout the program systems, but specifically designed for the senior trip. This is a trip to Frankermouth scheduled June thirteenth. This trip will include a stop to Bronner's Christmas Wonderland, lunch at Zander's Restaurant, and time for the seniors to walk around throughout Frankermouth and shop through the system. The total cost of this trip is being in the three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five twenty-six, and the goal to keep it cost-effective for our senior communities. It is planned to only charge each senior citizen fifteen per person and six Lennox Township staff members accompanying them. Supervisor's Office is recommending approval for the trip. Keep in mind, when this trip was sent out, request for transportation was sent to a number of companies, the company that came back with ADA compliant required fifty-six passenger motor coaches that had availability was Indian Trails, and that cost was seventeen fifty-five twenty. As I said, this is ADA compliant, Zander's numbers came in at eighteen fifty-seven, or excuse me, fifteen eighty-seven thirty-five. As those items are within your packet, that totals out your cost. Do keep in mind, we do have seniors that are ADA required, so we have those coaches that we have to specify the equipment when we go out and look. A number of motor coach companies no longer carry the equipment and are limited down, so if their bus is booked, they are only required, if they have one motor coach out of ten with a lift, by federal law, that's the only thing they're required, so we do wind up getting into a very dismal situation of getting the equipment we need for those types of events. But with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or entertain
I'll make a motion to approve the senior center excursion proposal, take the senior citizen group to Frankermouth on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
I am motioned by the chair, supported by Treasurer Hollis, and Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gerlee?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item I, set budget workshop date, looking at, item, sorry, that item, open for Thursday at four o'clock, that work with everyone here? Michelle, does that work for you?
I will make the time work. We push it.
We can push it back to four thirty, it's not setting.
Well, it's because I'm having a senior barbecue from twelve to three.
Okay, so we can.
School, so to clean up, maybe four thirty?
Four thirty, I'll have five o'clock just to give you, sorry.
I should finish it by four, that's up to you guys.
Four thirty, this Thursday? Without looking at Michelle, the ad, it should be okay.
Let's do four thirty, four thirty.
I'll make a motion to schedule a budget workshop for Thursday, the sixteenth, correct?
Sixteenth.
Yep, at four thirty. Four thirty, yes.
Second.
I am motioned by the chair, seconded by Clerk Lawson, and Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gerlee?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item J, set twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget public hearing date, open the Senate at the June regular meeting, care what day is it?
I think it's June thirty. It's a day in June.
Ah.
Should be the, the first Monday or June is the third, June thirty.
That wasn't at the first, are we going to be able to complete?
Oh, budgets already, the draft budget's already completed.
Okay.
The budget workshop will be to top capital of the projects.
June thirty.
Yep, all right, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for June budget, sorry, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, on June third at six thirty P M during the normal meeting of the board justices.
Second.
I am motioned by the chair, supported by trustee Gerlee, and Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Gerlee?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, public count. Remember Robert, three minutes.
Well, being old, I kind of forget about things, but I do want to say, I do want to bring it back to the, the problem I have, and I forgot to tell you guys that, six weeks when I brought this up, I'm not sure how the township or the building department goes to the neighbor, do they say, um, your neighbor is complaining again? Because the day I came home, the guy wanted to fight me, my neighbor wanted to fight me, he's in his fifties, my fighting days pretty much ended like forty-some years ago, so I'm, I'm all down fighting, uh, but anyways, and then two weeks after the fact, I did it again, and he was really guy- great, flipping me off, you know, whatever, and of course, there's wars back and forth, he wanted to fight again, so I did call the sheriff. And I'm doing this all for, to get on the minutes, so I got a track record of what's going on, but, you know, a guy in the fifties, I'm dealing with a guy in his, that's, in his terrible twos, whatever was going on, but it's, it's, uh, it, it's unbelievable, and, and I believe that the township would maybe change the rules on, give this guy an approval on a building, that this would have never happened, I mean, maybe still had an ABER, but I lived next to a hayfield for thirty-three years, so I don't mind not having an ABER, you know, so it doesn't matter to me, but I think you have to change that rule before you get, especially in my situation, when my house was built in sixty-six, and I had nothing but hayfield, sixty-eight was around me, and everybody builds up, and I get it because of the septic field and the invert, that when it comes to my property line, there should be a swell, before any approval of anything, there should be a swell, and there's no swell between the property lines, and that's got to be addressed, and I don't know if it's too late or whatever, I'm going to have to get an attorney, I'm going to have to sue my neighbor, whatever happens, it's going to happen, but I think the township should be able to do something about this. Does that make sense? I think it makes sense. Clifford says yes. One second. Thank you. Have a good night.
Public comment. All right, moving on to closed session to discuss confidential attorney-client information.
Supervisors, just before we go to closed session, I'll do, I'll do a public comment. I was going to do a call from the Board, but a lot of these people will probably be gone. The Lennox Township New Haven Memorial Day Parade is the Monday of Memorial Day. I've been white, I, you guys are invited. Bring vehicle, Lennox, New Haven, EMS. So anybody can come on out, and so walk to the cemetery, little church service, and lunch at the post staff at the AMET post.
I'm sorry, Fred, did you mention the time, Mr. Clifford, the time?
Uh, line is at 9:40, 9:40, and we take off attendance. There's no ban. We walk to the, to the cemetery. The few ministers in town lead the ceremonies and that's it. Short and quick.
So I will make the motion to enter closed session at 7:21.
Second.
I'm motion by the Chair, second by trustee Gerly, and Deputy Clerk, please call roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Gerly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Closed session, Mr. Young.
I'd like to make a motion, we come back from closed session at 7:31.
Support? Just going to tell Carol to get back to her spot there. All right, I'm motion by trustee Gerly, second by the Chair, and Deputy Clerk, please call roll.
Gerly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson? Clifford? Gerly?
No, you forgot Kathy.
Hahn? I knew that.
Well, I will make a motion to proceed on the vice of the House.
All right, good seeing you.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, second by trustee Gerly, and Deputy Clerk, please call roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Gerly?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, moving on, call from the Board.
How long is it going to take for the law courts to be?
Depends on the builder.
I did not hear you.
Moving on to adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn at 7:33.
Second.
I'm motion by Treasurer Hollis, supported by trustee Gerly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carried out, we are adjourned.